Good morning, everybody. It's now 9:32 and I'm the Cabinet Member for... I'm the Deputy Leader and Cabinet Member for Community and Housing. Sorry, I'm going to start all over again. Good morning, everyone. Please can I welcome everyone to this meeting of the Deputy Leader and the Cabinet Member for Community and Housing Decision Day, taking place from the Walton Suite, Winchester Guildhall. I'm Isnall. My name is councillor Paula Ferguson. I'm the chairperson today and also the Deputy Leader and Cabinet Member for Community and Housing. Please can I advise that this meeting is being audio recorded, live streamed from the council's website. In addition, a video recording of the meeting will be uploaded to the council's YouTube channel after the meeting. Please can I remind any officers joining virtually to turn off their cameras? Do we have any officers joining us virtually today?
None today.
So we don't need that statement. Please can I also remind members to speak clearly? I believe we have one member speaking today, councillor Horrell. Very welcome. And also to remember to use your microphone. Can I please ensure, as a final point, to ask everyone to make sure their mobile phones are switched off or turned to silence? Thank you very much. Just before we start, I'd also like to welcome David Light from TACT in his room and also other TACT members who we have with us today. I'd also like to tell everyone we have two officers in the room. I have Kevin Reed and also Gillian Knight. And we also would like to welcome Mr Tate, who I believe you're speaking both in public participation and also to the paper this morning. Is that correct?
Thank you very much.
So if we could just start, are there any disclosures of interest? I have none, so we carry on from that. Mr Tate, would you like to speak after we've introduced the paper or would you like to speak right now? I think we'll introduce the paper and then we'll ask you to come and speak before we go on. So, Mr Reed, are you going to be introducing the paper? Thank you, if you'd like to go ahead.
Thank you, councillor Ferguson. This morning I'd like to present on the 7th of November, it's quite some... ...that current report. Fundamentally, the report, same forever, covering the period 7. The emphasis on pressing empty homes. I did take that decision because in law, main piece of legislation, press empty homes. That requires problems in instances who are the... Quite the fact that... ...isolation within Winchester. We have submitted successful, go down, confident, good evidence.
Thank you very much, Mr Reed. And just by a way of additional introduction, I'm right in saying that there isn't a statutory duty for us to have a strategy, but it is good practice.
Yes, that's correct. And also, if and when we do come to Smith, having a current and up...
And in terms of these Edmos, which are the Empty Dwelling Management Order, I saw in the report that you commented since that legislation has been in place, in fact, there have only been 106, I think it is, across the country, and one of those is ours.
From the information I could obtain, the government doesn't actually produce statistics. A tribunal found an article in the Guardian newspaper. We are one of the few local authorities, especially in Hampshire, actually gone...
Thank you. But having the empty home strategy definitely helps us when we need it.
Yes, certainly. As I say, part of the actual Edmo process, a local authority demonstrate that they do have one. Having previously had one, this is really...
Thank you, Mr Reed. Mr Tate, would you like to address now? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to address the committee. And it's something I would generally support, for what value that is as a citizen. But looking at problematic empty homes of over two-year duration, I just wonder whether the policy and the resources the council has needs to be beefed up. I was interested, the one success the council claims, popped up to the owner's existing property in Oliver's Battery Road North, which has also been empty for, what, five or six years, and is causing neighbours' problems. And I have to wonder what's happening to that. In St Cross Road, the bane of my life, number seven St Cross Road, has been empty for, what, 15 to 18 years. The council did force the owner to undertake some repair work to that, but that's a long, long time to be empty. Councillor Ferguson will be well aware, 11 Stockbridge Road has been empty for 15, 16 years. Great that a planning application has just been submitted, but I just wonder what the authority is doing and what is just happening of natural evolution. The issues of empty properties have huge impacts on neighbours. There's another property in Romsey Road. Officers had a success with the Bungalow 193, Romsey Road. But there's another property which is seeming... It is empty, although the lady still purports to live there. It's causing huge problems to neighbours both sides. It's a fire hazard and it's a source of vermin. So for the people affected by empty homes, it has a huge and disproportionate impact on both their quality of life, as the report says, but also on their ability to sell those properties. So although it only affects comparatively small numbers of people, I would really encourage the council to beef up the powers that officers have and put some real resources. It's a travesty that we have properties which are empty. But I do accept it's a national problem and actually Winchester are putting a lot of effort into it, more than many other authorities. So whilst I commend the actions, I do make a plea to give officers more tangible support and force, get the policy working in practice. So thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr Tate. Can you just push your button again? Thank you. And indeed, there are other properties I probably could list as well, which appear to be an empty home. But I know that the first course of action is to contact the landlord, and if there is a landlord or an owner who owns that property and then makes, I don't know, promises that they will act, then we have to allow them to do that. But I absolutely take your point about, is there anywhere we can beef up the policy? And we will talk about that today. But thank you for your comments. Councillor Horrell, would you like to address the meeting now?
Thank you, Chair, for allowing me to address this Decision Day this morning. I too welcome and supportive of the empty homes policy, as I was back in 2016 when we initiated the first iteration, and I hope that you will approve it today. But I do ask, rather like Mr Tate, that sufficient focus continues to be made in this area. I hear words around the council such as, "It costs a lot, it takes a lot of resources", all of which are true, and the one example of taking a case to conclusion is proof of that. But whilst we continue to live in a district where we do not have sufficient affordable homes for those who will live to live and work here, we cannot allow empty homes to remain unchecked. We have a moral obligation to speak up and take action. And just because we do not actually need an empty homes policy does not mean we should not do so. With 88 properties empty for more than 24 months at the end of March this year, we could be supporting many additional families to live in our district. We will have Ukrainian families looking to remain in our district over the coming months, and we have a duty to all to persuade the owners of empty properties to put them back into use, unless there is a strong and compelling reason not to do so. We as an authority can help signpost owners, as indicated in the policy, if they're having difficulty, and that is a really good thing. But they must also understand, we will take action if needed. Our decision as an authority to charge additional council tax if a property is vacant for more than two years is a really positive action, which I know I supported. But clearly, we need to do more and keep at this. It is wasteful to have 409 empty homes when the council plan currently being drafted is actually considering building on green fields as we don't have sufficient homes available. This to me seems just plain wrong, even if we could just get a handful of empty properties back into circulation, that would help us. I urge you, councillor Ferguson and the administration, to not only adopt the policy but to actually implement it and put the appropriate resources in place to bring about real change. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Horrell. And again, I think very much the policy shows not only our intent to address this issue, but sets out very clearly the procedures that we have put in place, which are robust. We will go into a bit more detail on the numbers, I have a few questions for clarification. But I wonder, Mr Light, our TACT representative who's with us today, thank you for coming, is there anything that you might like to add before we go on to some of the discussion? Thank you.
I'd just like to say that we support the policy and I would echo what councillor Horrell and Mr Tate said, that it is implemented, you know, to its degree that it can be. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr Light. And thank you, councillor Horrell, Mr Tate and Mr Light, all for your support for this policy, which is a refresh on the previous empty home strategy, but perhaps with a few additional tweaks and changes that have been made. Mr Reed, I just wondered, in terms of the change in the mix of properties, those that are... We have fewer properties that are actually three years over, left empty. Do you have any sort of sense of why that is or whether that is that introduction of that additional council tax premium? Do you think that's having an effect, perhaps if you could comment?
Yes, I think I'd be in agreement with councillor Horrell. I do believe that council tax has acted as catalyst for it. Don't move along back into occupation because home eventually is... ...300%. It's a shame it couldn't be even higher. The council tax. And many, many back into occupation. If I may, I would also like to address issues. Horrell, but policy or strategy, as you all know, places an emphasis on properties which are... And this is a critical... Those issues are things such as antisocial, drug den, alcohol, issues around vermin, etc. to deal with, as is laid out in the policy. Respect of actually bringing empty home back in. Only legislation... ...Edmo, theory around the Edmo, got to have us case sent to the... Which is also... ...has been social behaviour to the... Not able to demonstrate... ...Edmo we sent to the first... ...slightly be missed. Need to be robust and be confident, any Edmos we send are going to be approved. It is a two-stage procedure. Actually, you can send a case to try... That's all... ...the aim is to then negotiate the... ...don't do that in local authorities. So fundamentally, yes, I appreciate that there are empty properties in the district. And you certainly encourage... But unless they're actually called nuisance, can't really go down the... Certainly encouragement... In itself, unless the law changes, owners do not want to bring...
Thank you, Mr Reed. And I take from that that in terms of the work that we do as a city council, we are using all of the powers that we have. Some of them in the early stages are persuasive, perhaps, more than legislative, to encourage owners to bring those properties back into use, for the very reasons that we all know that we do have families on our waiting list. There are families who do need homes, and it seems a travesty if we have good homes sitting, doing nothing, lying empty. But I think Mr Tate's comment about the impact that when these homes get into a state of severe disrepair has on neighbours, and they seem to be there for a very long time, and it affects the properties around them. We do know that people sort of wish that something more could be done, but it's the statutory legislation that we currently have that doesn't perhaps allow us to be more forceful. It's possible the legislation may change. There is changes in other places around council tax premium for different types of properties being used in different ways, so we may see that change in the future. Can I just ask, in terms of the letters that we send, what impact do you think that they have?
Kevin, before you speak, can I just ask you to pull your stork of your microphone nearer to you for the audio? Thank you.
They bring to the attention of the homeowner, obviously, the council aware of their property. And in some instances, it does spur the owner to do something about it, but unfortunately, that's not always the case. But as you're aware, it's a three-stage process whereby we have three different letters of increasing encouragement. And hopefully by the time an owner perhaps does receive the third letter, he's seriously considering doing something with the property, whether selling it, letting it out, just forcing it to remain vacant for the periods of time. But yes, I do believe the letters we do send out do have an impact. The administrator in the private set housing team does regularly, once he's sent out a letter, leave a contact from the owner of the vacant property, buy so that they do something with it. It's not a huge number, but...
Just in terms of the specific properties that Mr Tate mentioned, ones that I'm aware of, that have seemed to have been there for a long time, do we keep a log or a register of the activity? Are we aware of those properties?
Some of those properties I'm aware of. One is actually classed as a second home, although it has been vacant. I am in very regular contact with the owner of that property, but he is rather... The other property in... In respect of properties where they are vacant and perhaps the others have become overgrown, attract vermin in the strategy, such as... There is lesser legislation which... ...deal with... So everything isn't just reliant on Edmo, that's more to do with bringing the property ... ...actually causes instances. But it's not... Everything isn't just focused around Edmo. The Edmo is just purely about trying to actually bring... Other... ...address those. Respect of people who've complained about it. ...shape the complaint. If you need help, I'll notice as well.
Thank you, Mr Reed. And I think what you're saying from your response is that we're using all of the powers that we have available to us to try and bring those properties, not only to enter a state of better repair, so reducing the antisocial behaviour, but where need be, we will go to the full lengths of the law of what we can do. And it's heartening to know that we do actually create property files and we have someone actively looking at those properties. I just had one question on this. I note in the actual strategy itself, 17 Energy Efficiency, we talk about the requirement, the sort of legislative requirement that all private properties are England EPC, Energy Performance Certificate Band E. And we also say that as the council, we will encourage landlords or homeowners to bring that property up to that level of a minimum standard of a band E when it's reoccupied. I would like to suggest that we actually improve this policy slightly, this statement, to say that we'll go beyond the band E and encourage them to actually improve the energy rating, at least to a band C. Is that something we can do?
We can certainly put it in the strategy and encourage them to do so, in respect of private rented properties, that we always do encourage owners to increase the energy ... ...above the legal minimum, which is E. But yes, it's... ...say that we'd like to encourage them to... ...encouragement, but I support that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mrs Knight, do you have any comment you might like to make?
Yes, I would actually. I'd just like to endorse Kevin's explanation of the delays to some extent. I completely share Mr Tate and councillor Horrell's frustrations of, you know, we need to invest more. One of the most difficult part of the role for the officers is they are negotiating with somebody who owns that property and actually feels it's really not for the council to be telling them what they should be doing with their property, which makes it such a difficult negotiation. And what frustrates me about the law around this is it is so easy to stall the work. So if, for example, they say, "Well, we'll put this right, we'll put this right", they may be allowed up to six months to put it right, and they might do something very little that makes a change, but we have to then go back to the drawing board. And I think that is some of the frustrations with this. You are dealing with people that have their own lawyers and their own support, and they will fight us quite hard to bring that property back into use. And it's always a shock as to why, because the property is deteriorating, we're there with advice and support, but it is probably one of the most frustrating legislation we've got. So I welcome the fact that perhaps that's being looked at.
Thank you, Mrs Knight. So if we look at the recommendation, the recommendation is as the Cabinet Member for Community and Housing, that we approve the draft Empty Home Strategy 2227, which addresses empty homes in the Winchester district. I'm pleased that we have this strategy. I'm pleased that we have refreshed it. I'm pleased that we are using everything that we can to bring empty homes back into use wherever possible, using whatever legislation is at our fingertips, also the letters of encouragement, also that active management of the process to bring homes back in. The strategy definitely sets out our intention that we are not happy to have empty homes in our district. We know they're needed and we would like them to be occupied, not only to reduce the antisocial behaviour and the impact they have on neighbours and other residents, but primarily, if we can, to make sure we create additional homes which we know are much needed. So despite that slight tweak around the energy standards, I am very happy to approve this strategy today. I'd like to thank everybody for coming along. Thank you for your comments and for taking the time. And just after 10 o'clock, that's the meeting close. So thank you, everybody. Bye. And just after ten o'clock, that's the meeting close. So thank you, everybody. Bye.